Hello there. Today is Wednesday, which means that the Denver City Council is going to committee. And the committee that is meeting is what I like to call the Committee on Fucking Over the Unhoused and Killing Black People. This is where oversight for the Denver Police Department happens, as well as allocations for the unhoused. Today, we have a presentation from Denver 911, which I'm sure will be enthralling. Look, y'all, I got stuff to do too. I have company, I got four kids, and we just found out that two of them will have to be learning from home starting next week because of the new stay in shelter-in-place order. So to that end, I promise you, there are other things I could be doing right now. But when it comes to protesting, absolutely none are more effective than showing up and pushing on our elected officials to spend our tax dollars appropriately. If you want to engage, engage, but I strongly recommend having this playing softly in the background next to you while you work. And if I need your attention, or there's something you really need to pay attention to, I'll say, "Hey." And if you hear that sound, tune into what we're doing. I won't take your attention for very long, okay? Okay. Anything that is worth remembering, I will make a note in the comments here. And by the way, this broadcast is streaming simultaneously to Twitch, three different Facebook groups, two different Facebook pages, my YouTube channel, which is the repository for all the lives that I do, as well as Twitter. So if you have any questions, anywhere that you are watching this, if you comment, I will see the comment on the livestream. I can respond to that comment, and that response will go to all the platforms. So if you're watching and you can't see the question, I'll bring it on the screen, just like I am, this comment right here. I'll bring it on the screen, and then when I respond, I'll respond here. And that response will go everywhere. So even if you can't see the question, you will see the response. We together? Before we go any further, before this meeting starts, there's something really important that you need to know. So here we go. Hey. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Carrie Joy. Yay. Happy birthday to you. If you aren't aware, Carrie Joy is the wife of Councilperson Candy Say Debaka. Please go tell Candy Say Debaka how much you appreciate her work, and tell her wife happy birthday. Carrie Joy, it is wonderful having you on this earth. I loved you before I knew who you were married to, so please don't think that diminishes you in any way, just tying in context for everyone watching. You are amazing, you are vibrant, and your energy is what puts the wind, frankly, it's the wind beneath my wings, and it's the wind in the sails of so many activists in the area. We love you, Carrie Joy, we love what you do. Happy, happy, happy birthday to you. Yay. Get a screenshot of that, so I embarrass her real good. As I sit here, whoops, wrong one. As I sit here in my onesie trying to stay warm in a house where the heater doesn't work because it is 188 years old. So with no further ado, let's start the meeting. Officially, this is a safety, housing, and homelessness. Safety and housing? I'm like, yeah. If only we kept the unhoused safe.
Amy Robyn-Kneecat large.
Well, welcome, everybody. I don't know.
Welcome, everyone, except the bitches that voted to keep the Allied Security Contract. You can go fuck yourselves.
Glad to have the pleasure of chairing this committee. Today's agenda, as I said, is quite full. We'll start with a pair of items related to Charity House, a 36-unit supportive housing project on Welton Street, after which we'll hear from our city attorney's office about changes to our municipal code to bring us into conformity with changes to state law, followed by a briefing from our 911 department. So with that, I will turn the floor over to Megan Yonkey from our Office of Housing Stability.
Hello and good morning, Megan Yonkey, from the Housing Development Officer from the Department of Housing Stability. I'm here again with a two-part contract, two contracts for the same project, much like I was a couple weeks ago for Warren Residences. It's kind of the same setup. Or we have a housing development contract and a services contract for a supportive housing project called Charity's House. I will share my screen. Sorry, one moment, I thought I had both. My apologies, I thought I had both open.
I do that too. Fuck Zoom. Don't worry, girl.
Great, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, ma'am, if you can get it into the full-screen format, there you go.
Great, thank you so much. So we're here talking about the Charity's House project. Here's a rendering of what that will look like, a small but mighty project in the Five Points neighborhood, 36 units. So we're talking about providing a $1.8 million performance loan to the Community Outreach Service Center. It's associated with the Agapi Church, also known as COSC. This loan will be forgiven after 99 years of affordable housing performance compliance. It'll have 36 one-bedroom units, all deed restricted at 30% of area median income. The city covenant will be recorded on the leasehold interest. This is another DHA delivers-for-Denver, or D3, project, so we'll have a DHA lease on the land that will be leased to the Community Outreach Service Center for 99 years, so perpetual affordability. The project will utilize 4% low-income housing tax credits, and will provide supportive housing services to those currently experiencing homelessness, which is the associated contract we'll talk about today. And I already talked about the D3 funds associated with this project. So the unit mix, all 36 units will be affordable at 30% of AMI. And just a reminder, 30% of AMI for a single-person household is $21,000, and for a two-person household is $24,000. There's just a quick mock-up of what a one-unit, a one-bedroom unit looks like in the Charity's So again, the project is located at Welton Street and Downing Street, so kind of at that triangle shape in the Five Points neighborhood. So in addition to city funds, the borrower will leverage state funding, private debt, DHA delivers-for-Denver, or D3 funds, low-income housing tax credit equity, and deferred developer fee. 36 vouchers will be provided by the Denver Housing Authority, and the overall total development cost is $13.3 million, or $370,000 per unit. This is a high number, and it has to do with it being such a small building, so we're not getting as many, what am I trying to say, economies of scale as if this were a large building. So it's a building on a small parcel. So this is what happens when you kind of have in-bill development in a more urban So a little bit more about the context, again, in Five Points, Council District 9, it's immediately adjacent to the RTD Light Rail L-line station, as you can see right there. So just immediate walking distance, a half-mile to several parks, the Curtis Park, Polar Dog Park, and a half-mile to Manuel High School. So lots of different resources available within walking distance of this site, and of course, very close to lots of employment activities and close to downtown. So with that, I'll open it up if you have any questions about the overall project, and then I will talk about the supportive services in a moment.
Okay. Let's see here, not seeing any questions, why don't you continue, and perhaps we'll have some thoughts at the end. I see Councilman Flynn has his hand up.
Oh, great. Hi, Flynn.
Megan, could you talk a little bit about, go back to that slide that had the, all the sources of capital?
Fuck this guy, by the way. Fuck this guy real hard.
What is the source for that?
The source of the mortgage?
Yes, I'm looking at it on, I have the PDF up on my screen. Permanent mortgage, $4.899 million.
Great question about who the bank is. I'm forgetting offhand who the permanent lender is. We do have Oriana Sanchez, who's the project sponsor, I believe, on the line. She may be able to answer that question.
Oh, great. Hi, Oriana. Just curious who the lender is on that.
There we go. I'm unmuted. Okay. Good morning, everyone. So, permanent mortgage on Charity's House is coming from, making sure I'm not getting deal merge here, is Chappa.
Oh, okay. All right. Very good. And.
Actually, I misspoke, I misspoke, I apologize. It's coming through Boston Capital Finance.
Okay.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and Mr. Chair, that's all, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Flynn. No further questions. Megan wanted to continue on to 1171.
Sorry, I had a moment of issues. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Great. Great, so the second part of a supportive housing project is the services that are required to help individuals maintain their housing and remain housed. That's obviously the goal that we're trying to achieve with this housing, so services are a crucial portion of that whole exercise. So we are proposing providing a $950,000 services contract, again, to Community Outreach Services Center, or COSC, to provide supportive services to the residents of the 36 units of Charity's House for a 15-year period, spread out over the 15 years. It is $1,759 per unit per year of the required, and we'll go through this if you have any questions, the minimum of $7,200 per unit per year we require. So that's how the funds are leveraged. COSC can draw up to $63,333.33 in each year, and if funds are not drawn in any particular year, they are cumulative. COSC may draw in advance of expenses rather than on a reimbursement basis. I know we've had questions about that in the past. We do annual reporting and review of expenses and make sure that everything is kosher before allowing budgeting and draws for subsequent years. So supportive housing services are broad. Again, the goal is to help individuals maintain their housing so they can include, but are not exclusive to the following on this screen. I won't go through this in lists, but ranging from case management, substance abuse, treatment services, and everything in between, transportation. In this case, we had earlier proposed to give every resident an RTD pass, and Oriana could speak to this, but because of parking issues on this site that we can talk about, if you have questions, I don't believe we are providing those transportation passes to all the residences, residents of the site. But normally, supportive housing services could include all of those services as well, given proximity to the RTD services. Just a reminder of some of our requirements for these services. They have to be available to residents of supportive housing, and have to include access to multidisciplinary treatment teams, including housing stabilization and linkage to community supports. Providers must have a budget of at least $7,200 per unit per year, exclusive of operating expenses, so these are what we consider below-the-line expenses after paying for debt and operating expenses of the building. Services must provide for at least one staff member for every 15 supportive housing units, and supportive services must be offered on a volunteer basis to tenants of supportive housing, and be implemented in a manner reliant on current best practices, including housing first from reduction and trauma-informed care. In this project, well typically, for these projects, we require that at least 50% of referrals come from the One Home System. We can talk about that more if you have any questions, but in this case, 100% of the referrals will come from the One Home System. This project is trying to provide some preference in referrals coming from the justice system, from those who are formerly incarcerated, but 100% of the referrals will come from the One Home System. So talking a little bit about the budget, in year one, it will cost approximately $275,000 to provide services at this building, or about $7,652 per unit. We are assuming that the cost of those expenses will increase by 3% a year. As you can see, some of the sources, we expect, because this is a tax credit project, it has access to what's called a developer fee boost, which provides a source of funds over a period of time. This project will also be able to bill Medicaid as a result of its partnership with mental health centers at Denver. It will also have cash flow from the project to be able to contribute to services, and then we'll have our funds, as well as some in-kind staffing support, to round out that $270,000 per year. They are planning a 1 to 10 staff-to-resident ratio, and the services include a 24-hour front desk support staff. There, we provided a lot of background last time we were in front of this committee about...
Good morning, Chris Heinz. Thank you so much for voting to end the Allied Security Contract and punish the company that brutally beat a citizen. I'm just, I'm proud as hell of you, and I'm grateful that you're here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You are the perfect 10, just know, and make sure your colleagues know that we're watching, we're applying pressure, we'll give credit where it's due, and we're gonna scream when you're wrong. And thank you again, everybody. This right here, Chris Heinz, is the man who responded to us and helped reach out to DOTA to make sure that the unhoused sweeps would stop this weekend when the weather was below freezing, below 10 degrees. Thank you for your service, Chris Heinz. Walla Moms appreciates you, everybody loves you, including me. Don't screw up.
If you all remember, there were some, there were decisions made that there was inadequate parking on this site, and so the project was required to procure...
There you go. Thanks, Chris. That's right. Chris, be sure you tell.
...to the project.
Carrie Joy, happy birthday.
...providing onsite parking, I'm sorry, onsite transit passes to RTD. My understanding is that the project is now required to expend those funds on a parking...
Just saying, it's politics, you know? Support can be gained and lost at any moment. We would like to be faithful to you. Please keep being faithful to us.
Thank you. What was the cost differential, I guess? We're talking about 36...
Happy birthday to Carrie Joy. I wonder how many of Candy Say Debaka's colleagues have wished her wife happy birthday? I mean, it's been a while since I was in a normal corporate environment, but that was always seen as a pretty kind gesture. One of those, it was almost weird if you didn't do it, especially with people you worked with, this small group, so you worked closely with.
Folks definitely needed parking spaces, and you decided to go that route?
Love you, Chris Heinz, I do. This makes me so happy. Thank you, I needed that this morning.
Well, thank you for the question, and I can absolutely discuss how we came to this decision, which was not an easy decision for us. So the parking lease itself is $7,000 a year, for a moment there, I almost said a month. And so the, and that is approximately what we had in the budget for the RTD passes. We came to the parking lease because we had gone to the Board of Adjustments to request that our parking requirements be reduced. What we know is that supportive housing developments, residents that live in supportive housing developments, approximately 6% to 7% of the residents require cars. We've provided six spaces in our design here, and the Board of Adjustments ruled against us. So to then meet our requirement under the zoning, we needed to lease 17 spaces. And you can see, or maybe you can't see, but on our generated cash flow for the services budget, we're taking $20,000 of our cash flow over into services, and that's, it's a pretty tight operating budget. And so to not affect the operating budget and to make sure that we could move enough money over from cash flow to support the services, we wanted to make sure that our services provided were still as robust as we need them to be. We took the transportation line item of our services budget and had we cut the RTD passes. That being said, I'm still in discussions with RTD and looking at different programs, and the intent will be to see if we can work out other passes or other transportation needs for the residents, because they won't have cars. And so we will continue to work on how we can provide alternative transportation to the residents at no cost to them.
How big is the lot that you have, you've got to lease?
We, well, we leased 17 spaces. The lot itself is about 50 spaces, and so the owner was gracious enough to allow us to lease those 17.
Okay, that's unfortunate. Thank you so much, I appreciate you guys having to manage around that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Kneecat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I couldn't resist just chiming in on the systemic issues that have been raised in this conversation. And so if I may, just highlight two things that this situation has uncovered. One, we already knew that the parking reductions in our code that are standard and automatic were too low for particularly supportive housing, but probably even for 30% of AMI housing as well. And as we all know, this adds like $25,000 to $35,000 a parking spot to the cost of a project, depending if you do structure it, or if you have the land for a surface, it varies. So it makes housing for people who are poor more expensive, they don't need the spots. And so the original plan from Community Planning and Development was to roll this discussion about parking reductions into the conversation about incentive zoning. Because of some of the things we learned as this project and others that were frankly treated similarly by the Board of Adjustments came to light, I did ask Community Planning and Development to please separate out and accelerate the conversation about parking reductions, so that we don't depend on a big complicated conversation about zoning and required housing and, you know, density bonuses. And in my mind, existing affordable housing projects need this relief now. So I just wanted folks to know, I've made that request, I don't have any concrete timeline, I've made host aware of the fact that I made the request, I believe they were aware as well. So I do think there is a code change that needs to happen, and it needs to happen soon, so we don't see more situations like this, where instead of the help residents need, they're paying for a parking lot. That's just gonna sit empty. This is just not good policy. So that's one thing. The second thing I just want to point out is, I understand our volunteer boards, you know, serve and have, you know, big burdens, but I will just say that I don't believe the oversight, or training, or infrastructure is there. This board, you know, cited in a lot of testimony about the residents themselves in this discussion about parking, which is really inappropriate, comments about their, you know, substance abuse or criminal histories, things that are frankly have nothing to do with parking. They also frankly, you know, were inconsistent compared to other affordable housing projects that had been reviewed. It's an enormous amount of power that we have turned over to a volunteer board that may not have the infrastructure it needs to be successful. And I just think that there's not a lot of staff oversight of this board, it has one kind of staffer that is, lives outside the CPD structure, and so I think that...
Anyone have any opinions about that? Let me know.
I don't know if other council members have heard concerns about the Board of Adjustments. I have. I've heard concerns about the treatment of applicants, you know, our everyday residents who go in because they have a patio waiver, and they don't understand the process, and just, I just think that raise some concerns for me about how this board functions, and whether we are using national best practices for the kinds of things to give to a volunteer board like this, and what they need to be successful in a position like this.
I'm all about oversight, when we're taking it away from...
I think there's two systemic issues.
One branch to distribute it amongst several branches.
...evaluate the structure and role of this board.
I have an issue with volunteers because I think people should be paid for their time, like the police, are always paid for their time.
Projects like this.
So if you have any experience, please throw it in the comments here.
If anyone else is interested...
I don't know this particular board.
But wanted you to be aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, if I can respond to any adjustments as well? I would just also bring up that this parking issue almost killed this project and resulted in us not bringing it to your attention because of the situation with Denver Housing Authority and our 99-year deed restriction on the property. It is required that this lease with the private owner of the parking lot be for 99 years. So it is a very complicated and complex parking structure that we are having to complicate because if there is at any point, this project becomes out of compliance with zoning, then it puts the housing at risk, and it puts our deed restriction at risk. So that is a very major issue that we had to deal with, and thankfully, the hard work of the development team in getting to the finish line, and there are still some issues that we need to work out, but we're confident we'll get there. But they had to negotiate a 99-year lease in order to accomplish this project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, I have Councilman Flynn.
Fuck you, Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me complicate it even further, and maybe Oriana would be the best to answer this. So, under the terms of that lease with the parking lot owner, you have 17 spaces. Are they 17 specific spaces? And how do you plan to use them?
Well, yes, they have to be 17 specific spaces. Under planning rules, we will have to have signage, and we will provide signage for the spaces so that they'll be noted for Charity's House. I don't know how we'll use them.
So here's my question, can you derive some revenue? Can you sublease them? Can you, you know, can you have monthly parkers, parking customers who are paying you, and so you can maybe defray some of the cost of that? In fact, you'd probably make more than $7,000 and get it back. Does the lease allow that?
That's an excellent question, and I actually don't, I don't believe that that would be allowed under our, under the zoning terms. If it would, I absolutely would look into it some...
If there's a lawyer in the house...
I don't think we can do that.
If you have a lawyer on your team, which I imagine you do, maybe they could investigate that, because it seems that... The second problem that I foresee is that over the next 99 years, the owner of the property might want to build something on it, right? And so what would, no?
Well, that won't, that won't be allowed. That's, that's, that's the, those are the type of details that we had to work out in extreme detail, yeah.
So if the owner...
In case anyone is curious, I'm live streaming now to as many platforms simultaneously as I possibly can. It dilutes my views per platform, so if you see 400 and 400 views, it's actually closer to, because it's really across seven platforms, it's closer to 2,800. I don't care about that raw number so much. What I care about is making sure it's accessible to everyone. Whole lot of people don't use Twitter, whole lot of people don't use Facebook, whole lot of people don't use YouTube, et cetera. So just trying to increase accessibility, not add my numbers. I don't make money from this, and I never will. It's my civic duty to make sure you give shit about your civic duty.
1171.
We gotta show up. Did you hear about the Allied Security Contract? We killed it by showing up.
I didn't see where that came from. Madam Kneecat, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think Sawyer beat me to the punch, sorry, but either way, either way is fine.
I'm leaving that up to Emily Lappel to choose. All right, are there any objections to moving these items forward?
Correct, there's no longer a Q score. Correct. There's no longer a Q score or a K score. I forget, a clout score? Yeah, that doesn't really exist anymore. I wish it did, but I don't care about numbers. You, though, podcasters like Vinnie care about numbers because they have to. It's how they make money through advertisers. It is very important that we support our local content creators, especially the ones that are doing these labors of love for free. Vinnie, do you mind going ahead and then throwing a link in here? I'll amplify it across my other platforms too. I'll repost it. If you could throw a link to your podcast here, please subscribe to, I want to say Past Present Pod, I know that, that isn't it. A Plan for that Pod on Apple Podcasts, Box or your favorite podcast player. If you're a runner, I have a podcast too, but I figure most of y'all.
While you're doing that, I will give just a quick-
But all of you, you probably have the right to vote or will at some point. So you need to subscribe to Vinnie's.
Makes sense while you're trying to get-
Thanks, Sky. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. Um, Sky Stewart, Mayor's Office. Thanks, everybody, for having us here today. And really want to thank Marley and the City Attorney's Office for the help with this. Uh, I thought it might be helpful just to give everybody a, a quick background. What we're bringing forward today are some required code cleanup that will bring us in conformance-
Copying the link impatient.
There were some changes made during the state legislative session in 2019 that essentially build on some, some work that our team has been doing alongside City Council for a few years to make improvements to the criminal justice system. So we're bringing these forward today really as a cleanup, but it's important topics and it's something that council's been really engaged with, with us on over the years. So thought it was really important to spend just a little bit of time updating people on the changes to the code and the context around them. And I'll turn it over to Marley, but just wanted to let everybody know because I helped set up our state legislative work in partnership with Kendra Black as the Council State Legislative Chair, that I'm here for any questions about that legislative process as well. I'll turn it back over to Marley.
Great. Thank you, Sky. So the two bills before you today, uh, these are, as Sky mentioned there, to bring our DRMC into conformity with some state legislation that happened in 2019. One of them was HB 191225, which prohibits cash bail for certain low-level offenses. It doesn't prohibit cash bail for all municipal violations, but for many of them it does. And then also HB 191148, reduce-
See that? Prohibits cash bail?
Offenses from 365 days to 364 days. I think many of you were on council at the time, a couple of years ago when we did a-
Did you guys know this was happening? I did not know this was happening.
Sentencing scheme and our criminal justice system where we, most of our sentences for most violations of the DRMC-
Vinnie, did you know this?
300 days, except for a section of offenses called Class 1 offenses. There are seven of them. There, I won't read them all, but bias motivated types of offenses, habitual domestic violence offenders, those kinds of things. So this bill would impact that group of offenses, the Class 1s only. Everything else is-
Okay, good. So it's not just me. This is why we got to tune in, you guys. This is big stuff.
I apologize. Something's happening. One moment, please. All right. Well, I'll, I'll keep going. This would affect the Class 1 offense cases. The bill ends cash bail for low-level offenses that have no corresponding state offense. So we have a variety of them. I could share a, a table with you. But things like throwing stones or missiles, there is no corresponding state charge so that that would be. I'm not sure what's happening.
Marley, it looks like Emily is sharing her screen.
I apologize.
She's on slide four.
Problems.
Marley, if it's helpful, I can, I can kind of take over the presentation part and let you do questions.
I may have to log out and log back in. I apologize.
Okay, I, if you guys go, I'm gonna give you a link. You can go download this presentation from the website.
You'll come back in, uh, when we're ready for questions or to add during the presentation.
Okay, I think I back in and my problem's resolved, but Sky, go ahead.
Sure, either way, Marley. Sure. Uh, I, I'll go ahead and if you continue to, to have challenges, then maybe we'll just be set. But certainly Marley is the legal expert here, so I'll just help with the context. Okay. As Marley was saying, uh, the, the way the state bill worked is it prohibited cash bail for offenses that don't have a corresponding state offenses. So we put, uh, we put our city of purposes into three different categories. There are offenses that do have a corresponding state offense. Those would still be eligible for cash bond. There are offenses that do not have a closely matching state offense. Those are no longer eligible for cash bond and would move into the PR bond category. And there are offenses that potentially would still be eligible for cash bond depending on the circumstance. And so one example of that, that I think is probably easy for people to understand or easier for people to understand-
So all of this was passed before I really started paying attention.
If value was greater than $50, it would still be eligible for cash bond because there's a corresponding state offense. But if the shoplifting is for something less than $50, it is no longer-
How about protesting?
And now it takes the place of a PR bond. So that's kind of some context. And as Marley was saying, we do have a chart that Marley's team put together that is, is helpful. It's been shared with a couple of council members who asked about it and happy to share more broadly. Next slide, Emily. So the code change we're proposing today would explicitly repeal portions of the code that disallow use of PR bonds. We've talked about PR bonds quite a bit in this committee.
Yeah, PR is personal recognizance.
With councils.
Means no cash, no, no money exchanged as long as you show up for your court date.
PR bonds are used to release someone without the need for monetary bail. Bond is still set by the court. So the state bill and the code change just clarify the discretion there. And on the next slide, you're gonna see a chart with some work we've done over the years.
So here's what it means, like a $5,000 PR bond means we're gonna let you out of prison and you don't, without you having to pay ransom. But if you don't show up before your court date, you owe us $5,000 on the date. That's how a PR bond with a, with a dollar amount.
But want to be clear, all of these changes have actually already been instituted. We're just catching the code up with the work that's already been done.
Still criminalizes poverty.
Hop to the next slide, Emily. It'll just show you all a graph. And certainly we could, uh, at another time have, um, other members of the team come in and dig into more of the work that's been done over the years on this PR bond.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, Heinz, make them do it.
If you want to go to the next slide. This one relates to, as Marley said, changing the maximum sentence for a municipal offense down to 364 days instead of 365 days. So that previous maximum of 365 days has immigration consequences. It has particularly consequences for anyone with legal status. Immigration law is a bit nuanced and Marley certainly knows more than I do. But, but I, we don't have immigration attorneys on staff. So it is a complex area of law and there may be other nuanced areas that are impacted. But what we focused on is primarily this addresses anyone with a legal status. So legal permanent residents, people with student visas or work visas. One of the things that I think was eye-opening for all of us in previous years' reform efforts is that-
Christina Brown, where are you at?
In thinking through this federal law, a, a non-citizen is deportable for a single conviction of a crime involving moral turpitude committed within five years of admission if the offense has a potential sentence of one year or more. So that's where that 365 days becomes really important. That, that language in federal law really has some strong consequences for, for people in that immigration world. And so it's really important for us to be considering the consequences of that. If you want to go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more. As I was saying about the, the issue with this affecting mostly people with legal status, we were asked in our last round of conversation about the particular issue. What about undocumented immigrants? And in the case of undocumented immigrants, the federal government can deport based solely on being in the country without proper documentation. So the 364 days versus 365 days does not materially change the risk for those immigrants, unfortunately. But, but we want to do what we can to protect against unintended deportation consequences for people who are otherwise here legally, who may have committed, committed a low-level municipal offense. So that was really the, the impetus behind our previous efforts and the impetus behind the state acting in this manner as well. Want to go to the next slide? Just to give you a little bit of background, and as Marley said, I think many of you were here in 2017 when we undertook some sentencing reform to our entire sentencing structure. And at that time, we created rather than one uniform penalty structure, different classes of offense.
Tell me about it. Did you see John Oliver on Sunday night? I watched it last night and couldn't stop crying. I'm just like, this isn't what I signed up for. This is not the America I was brainwashed to believe in. This is not what I risked, took huge risks for in my early twenties.
At that time, made the choice to have a very limited number of ordinary risk offenses-
That my husband, who is a Navy veteran.
That were left without the 365 days. They were offenses that involve violent or bias motivated crimes. And at the time, we really felt like the, the nature of those violent offenses warranted keeping that, that limited number at 365. So that's the work we did in 2017. If you want to go to the next slide, Emily, there's a, a chart that breaks out some examples of what those are. And certainly, Marley, would be best to talk more about those. But we can, we can come back to that if people have questions. Just wanted to give some examples there. If you'll move to the next slide.
Everybody, you need to follow who I just tagged Christina Brown, immigration law. She is a badass. Her posts are incredible, both on Facebook and on Twitter. She is a local immigration attorney and she's screaming into the void. Don't let her scream into the void. Please go follow. I'm gonna put her here.
In this structure. And nothing in this bill or previous legislation limits alternative sentencing options. That's something I know we've all talked a lot about as well at the council level, things that the court can otherwise offer.
Vinnie, if you have not yet met Christina, I'm happy to make an introduction. She would be really good to have on your podcast at some point too. Especially if yours moved by the John Oliver things I was.
To kind of wrap up, we're asking to approve two cleanup changes to the code that conform us with changes that have already been made to state law. And it's two bill numbers, 1179 and 1178. And happy to take questions or more likely have Marley address questions.
My first question is where's that presentation?
All right. Well, thank you.
I'm not seeing it on the website. I want to go download it and tear apart.
And before I move forward, I'll welcome Councilmembers Black and Seda Baka to the table.
Hi, Seda Baka. Candy's here.
Who has requested time for public comment. So if we can promote Elizabeth Epps to position-
Oh, my God, it's Elizabeth Epps too.
You'll have three minutes and Ms. Lappel will do the timing. Welcome. Thank you, Flori George.
Good morning, sir. I just needed to start by clarifying. I'm sorry I missed a second. There in 1179, um, Sky or Marley, is this adjustment to the PR bond is gonna address DRMC 14-33 as well?
Yes, it does. It amends that.
Okay, sorry. Um, so then, then thank you. So I wanted to check in, um, City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to do so about the specific section of the code. If I sound excited, it's because I am. I'm excited about this update. I'm an abolitionist and with the Colorado Freedom Fund, what I do most days is we pay ransom, pay bond at jails across the heart range, including Denver, to get poor folks out of jail who are in pre-trial. Disproportionately, I actually have with me today, um, if you can see, but I have checks here back from the city of Denver made out to me for $1, $1, $5, $10, $10, $10. It goes on.
I know.
Most of these folks were caught up in this provision related to PR bonds in Section 1433, specifically EF and G, that, um, that takes away a judge's discretion to set PR bonds in cases where they otherwise would have been predisposed to do, right? So what you can read into a $1 bond is that the judge was, or magistrate was, was otherwise disposed to release the person, but there may have been objection from the city attorney and without consent, that couldn't be set. So revoking EF and G, particularly E, would put us in a position where these folks are free pre-trial. And y'all know this, but I think it's important to amplify that while COVID, COVID didn't create an entirely new public health crisis. It amplified the ones we already have. And so in Denver, to know that each night we have men and women, that we have folks in the Denver cage who are there for amounts as small as $1, $5 and $10 should be offensive to our sensibilities. And so amending this part of the code specifically, taking out the part that states that judges can't issue PR bonds unless the bond is on a schedule is really problematic. So I'm looking forward to the change. I recognize it's gonna bring more liberation to our neighbors and it's gonna help the system of, of, of a sensible justice that we have function in a way that's something much more akin to justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epps. Appreciate you taking the time to speak today. All right, as-
We love you.
I've got Councilwoman Kneech. You're up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I've been following this conversation for a couple of years when the bill was first going through the legislature. And I want to thank Sky. She's been good about continuing to give me information and, and follow it. I will just ask two really nuanced questions. I'm very supportive of the bill, but I just want to make sure I understand. One is for that category that may apply, that middle category where there may be a state corresponding offense and that state corresponding offense may have a cash bond. I just want to be clear that it's a cash bond allowed. There is no longer any offense in Denver where a cash bond is required, right? So I just want to, I want to clarify the negative of what we're doing, if that makes sense.
You're exactly right, Councilwoman Kneech. There is no offense in the DRMC that requires a cash bond. The judge can consider other factors as they do in every other case and, and set up PR bond if they so choose.
Okay, great. And then I just wanted to clarify how this works for minors who might be charged under these offenses. Is that all the same for them or is it different?
For, for municipal violations for juveniles, they cannot be held at all. They can never be arrested. It's always gonna be a summons and complaint situation for them.
Okay, so this doesn't impact them, but it's because they're not, they don't, they're not detained at all?
Correct.
Okay, super. Thank you for those things. Very excited to support this today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, not seeing, take one last look, not seeing any other hands up. So Marley, as I read the graph that was up during the presentation-
No, I, I don't, I don't think you misinterpreted it at all. I'm like, how dare you? I'm steaming. Don't you undermine our Beyonce?
During COVID because we were really trying to keep folks out of the, you know, out of the Petri dish of the jail and-
Were you? Were you? Then why was the ACLU so busy?
More and more across the board, even in domestic violence cases, more toward pre-trial supervision rather than cash bail. Um, I think Ms. Epps made some good points about the small amounts of bail that have been granted, which don't do anything for safety, victim safety or anything as opposed to pre-trial supervision. And there's different levels there. That's been more effective and that's been proven across the country. So we've been moving toward that anyway. So this is just consistent with that movement across the country, pre-trial supervision rather than cash.
Great. And do our number, are our numbers comparable to our fellow cities across the country? Are we doing better? Are we, do we still have room to go?
You know, that's a great question, Councilman. I, I don't have the answer to that, but I certainly have my team look into it and let this committee know.
We appreciate that very much. Thank you, Marley. And I've got, uh, Councilwoman Seda Baka. You're up.
Candy's here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am a little bit confused and I'm not sure if it's the same question that Councilwoman Kneech just asked. But on 1433, I'm not understanding the change to E, F and G. It, is it revoked? And, and G regarding the sex work. What, what is the change that's happening there? E is the section about personal recognizance bond. The court shall not issue a personal recognizance bond unless the ordinance violation is on a bond schedule or the prosecutor consent. And I think that's related to what Councilwoman Kneech- And I think that's related to what Councilwoman Knich just asked, is the domestic violence one, and G is the sex work one. But I'm not understanding what the change is doing.
So in 1433E, right now, if the city attorney wants to object to a PR bond in any case, not just DB cases, if a city attorney wants to object to a PR bond, as Ms. Epps noted, the objection would literally tie the judge's hands, that even if the judge believed that a PR bond was appropriate.
That's right. Elizabeth Epps clarified.
Or no conditions at all. The judge could not use its discretion to grant that bond.
I want, yes, me, too. And by the way, happy birthday here, Joy.
Would take away the ability for the city attorney to object to a PR bond, but it would, it's going to be more consistent with what happens in district court and state court, where the judge still can look at conditions.
Please keep commenting so I can keep hiding her face until she's gone, and they bring on Candy or Elizabeth Epps.
State court. The prostitution bonds, right now, they could not be on a bond schedule, which means if you're arrested for a prostitution offense, you had to sit in jail overnight and see a judge in the morning. You could not be post-bond that's on a bond schedule if you so chose. And this allows for those to be put on the bond schedule so that a person doesn't have to be sitting overnight to see a judge in the morning.
Got it. Yes. And is there any time limit associated with when people, when people's PR bonds or whatever are actually posted? Because sometimes, we know people get picked up, especially with a lot of the protests that are happening right now, and they'll sit in jail for a couple of days.
That's right.
Before their PR bond is even allowed. Like, does this have any timelines associated with that, or does this fix any of that problem?
This does not fix that.
This does not fix.
We've been working on processing times in the jail for a few years now. I think some of you on this committee are familiar with that work.
No.
It's gotten a lot better if someone was granted.
I need to understand how it's better, because it's still a fucking shit show.
That they sat there for a couple of days while they were processed.
Days.
That's a lot better. I don't know what the time, what we've gotten the time down to now, but.
12 hours. It's too long.
Processes in DPD and the sheriff's office have significantly improved over the last two years. I can tell you on municipal violations that my attorneys and victim advocates staff that courtroom seven days a week, except for a few holidays. We even staff it during the mandatory furlough days. So we are in there every single day.
You know who gets paid on, you know who doesn't have to do mandatory furlough? DPD. That could be part of the problem.
They're being heard. The processing piece may still.
It's like prescribing Viagra and outlawing abortion, then you're going to have like a whole bunch of new problems. It's kind of like that. We're going to keep paying this group to arrest people while we furlough the processors.
I would love that intervention. And if there's any possible way to tie a timeline to this, I think it would be important, because if we're trying to get people out and we're punishing them by not processing their bail.
We are criminalizing protesting. That's right.
I feel like it defeats the purpose of this. And so is there any possible way to tie a minimum mandatory processing time to this?
And I do know that, I think it was last year as well, and.
Denver press test, where are you at?
Have this at your fingertips, that the state legislature did pass some legislation regarding timing and that bonds have to be processed within four hours, I believe. Sky, do you have that at your fingertips by chance?
But they're not out in four hours. They are not out in four hours. But they are not out in four hours.
There have been continued improvements at the state level on that issue. I think it's something worth continuing to talk about. It's probably not appropriate to add to this bill, but something that we could continue to work on. And I can get out some of that information about the changes to state law.
Candy, Elizabeth's back on that.
And since it changed in state law, what happens when Denver doesn't do it within the four hours? What recourse does the person have?
I think what we need to do is pull that bill and get the details of that for you, Councilwoman, so we're happy to do that.
Yeah. How about you do your homework before you show up, like Candy does, like Elizabeth Epps does?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
We love you, Candy. Thank you.
All right. Let's take one last look here. Seeing no further questions. Do I have a motion to move 1178 and 1179 forward?
Oh, moved. Okay.
I heard Pro Tem Torres, and the second was?
President.
President Gilmore. Leadership takes the bill forward. I like that. All right. Well, thank you, Marley. Thank you, Sky, and we'll see you at council. Now, we'll move forward, looking for Andrew Dameron, our Director of Denver 911.
Yep.
I am here. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you, and I can see you. The floor is yours.
Perfect. All right. I'll share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. So thank you all for having us on to kind of talk a little bit about 911. My understanding was that the committee was looking to get a little more information about how 911 operates, when calls come through, kind of to start to finish, a little bit how our decision trees are determined, and then some additional information about kind of statistics and that sort of thing.
So this, by the way, is the same division that operates the STAR program. STAR is what we want to increase because it defunds DPD. STAR needs to be the first point of responders for mental health, for addiction, for.
Answering point for Denver 911.
Anything nonviolent. We're not going to, look, abolition's not going to happen overnight. And I've lived in countries where toppling the system overnight created, did more harm than good. But this effective dismantling while remantling is what happens, while rebuilding, sorry, is what happens at city council, and why we have to be pressing back real fucking hard. If you are serious about abolition, if you are serious about defunding DPD, get your ass in here now and understand how the budget process works and where the dollars need to go. We defund DPD, and we give them here, but do we want this body overseeing STAR? That's a question, too.
Four sections. We have our call takers, our emergency communication technicians. We have our police dispatchers, our fire dispatchers, and our EMS dispatchers. The first point of contact with 911 is the emergency communications technician. They receive either a phone call, like I said, through 911, non-emergency, or a text. And their first objective is to get a snapshot built. This is the basic who, what, where, when, why, how, right? This is where is the emergency occurring? When did it occur? Is this happening right now, or is this something that happened a week ago, and you're just now reporting it? A brief synopsis of what is going on. This is when a nature code is determined or a category for the call, and we'll get into that a little bit on the next slide. Are there any injuries? And do you see any weapons? These are kind of the important elements of the snapshot that the call taker tries to get. They enter this into our computer-aided dispatch software, and then it's pushed to the dispatchers. A lot of PSAPs around the country, especially smaller ones, the call taker and dispatcher are the same person. So you have somebody, and matter of fact, this is my background, where you are taking the call, entering the information, and dispatching personnel on the radio all at the same time. Denver's fortunate in that we are able to separate those functions, and our computer-aided dispatch software allows them to kind of work a call at the same time. So the call taker puts in that snapshot and then pushes it to the appropriate dispatcher. What dispatcher it goes to is determined by the nature code, and it could go to multiple dispatch groups. So a crash on the highway, for example, a vehicle collision, is going to go to PD, it's going to go to EMS, and it's also going to go to fire. You know, somebody who's having difficulty breathing is just going to go to EMS. So that snapshot is built, the nature code is determined, and it's pushed out to the dispatcher. This allows the dispatcher to then start getting help rolling. While they're doing that, the call taker is continuing to ask questions, gathering additional information, packing the data into the CAD entry, and the dispatcher can see that information coming in in real time, and they can be updating the responders.
Chris, thank you for being here, answering questions. We love you so much.
And again, there's kind of some back and forth as they kind of communicate.
See y'all, they listen. We got to speak up.
Now, continue, please.
Okay. Oops.
Thank you, Chris.
So one of the questions posed by the committee was how our decision-making is determined. There are two professional organizations for North America, and they operate internationally as well, those being Apco and NINA. They have developed standards and best practices that our training and standard operating procedures are based upon. The training program, the review of those SOPs are all kind of developed based on that information. I also included in here that Denver 911 is one of only 84 PSAPs in North America that has the Project 33 certification. This means that Apco has vetted our entire training program from start to finish, our SOPs themselves, how we review those, how we provide quality assurance and feedback to our call takers and dispatchers, and certified us as meeting their high standards. The STAR program, so how that kind of plays into this, and Emily had mentioned that you all were curious about how the decision trees for dispatching STAR were developed. Those were developed in, actually, I should back up a little bit. I'm getting ahead of myself. The decision trees for the call takers for any call that comes through is really the who, what, where, when, why, how. The exception to that is medical calls. So all of our call takers are emergency medical dispatcher certified, which means that they know how to give pre-arrival instructions to a caller. So if you call, because you come across a traffic accident, somebody's injured, they can talk you through how to help that person to give them the maximum chance of survival when EMS arrives. Those are actual decision trees with questions to ask. You input the answer that was given, and then it gives you the next question. Those are based on the International Academy of Emergency Dispatches Standards and Procedures. It's their protocols that we use. They are far and away the largest kind of protocol developer in North America for this purpose. And so those are prescriptive, question, answer, question, answer. We also perform pretty rigorous quality assurance of these calls especially, but also.
So right now, for those of you who just tuned in, what we're talking about is the STAR program and how it ties into 911. Councilperson Heinz came in and pointed out that STAR is being relocated to a different part of the budget and away from 911 in 2021. And we hope, that is something I would like to see, because frankly, the mayor has way too much discretion and no oversight at the moment. And we would like to give more of that power back to city council, dividing it effectively between the executive and the legislative branch, like the Constitution of the United States intended.
To identify.
Checks and balances. It's a system.
Those intercodes, those categories of calls that would most benefit from the STAR van. There is a set level of.
So Ella and the Rocky Mountain Sex Worker Coalition, the reason I tagged you is because they were talking about cash bail and detention times and giving judge's discretion. It was House Bill, go back through HB 19-1225 that went into effect last year. And then Elizabeth Epps popped on and asked a whole bunch of clarifying questions about it, and how, specifically how it would impact sex workers.
If the STAR van is available, they dispatch that unit instead.
She asked great questions. I love it.
This is a slide that was provided.
Sex work is real work, y'all. It's work.
Budget conversations last month.
It needs to be decriminalized. It needs to be destigmatized.
I updated it last week.
And if you don't think so, you need to go work on your intersectionality.
But the city, we are getting a lot of use out of this van. I kind of addressed all of this already, that the procedure and the qualifications for what was STAR eligible, it's kind of listed there. Finally, to get in some of our statistics, there was a question about what our call volume is. Here you can see our monthly call volume for the last four years. You can see we had a pretty significant dip in March and April of this year due to COVID. Fewer people out and about. But as of June, it kind of bounced back to normal. Total 911-only calls that we received, so emergency calls coming through for each year have been pretty consistent year over year. And then responding agency distribution, this was one of the specific questions that was asked of, what are the percentage of incidents that are dispatched to each of the responding groups? So if you look at this slide, the 911 ops up at the top, and this is 2020 so far, for every month that we have complete data, we've had 462,000 CAD incidents created. So those are incidents that require response. Of those, about 72% are dispatched to PD, about 16% are dispatched to FIRE, and about 13% are dispatched to EMS. That includes multi-agency, so if you add those up, it'll be a little bit over 100% because there are calls where.
Ella, I see you, and I see your question. By the way, yes, you're right. Sex work is real work. Absolutely. Absolutely. I will send you links to the presentation and the timestamp here where you can go back and watch the segment where I comment, where I tagged you in. Sorry about that.
From September 1st through October 21st.
It was over a whole lot more quickly than I expected it to be. So they are making some changes to House Bill 19-1225 that went into effect last year that would effectively make it, improve the processing times and increase the number of.
And that's mostly because.
Well, it will give judges more discretion, so if they set PR that we get people out faster, rather than requiring them to stay overnight, requiring judges to post bond for certain offenses, which is where you get a whole lot of dollar bonds, et cetera. And they asked for more clarification on EFG and H, which are all part of the bill, to make sure that improvements are made that would effectively decriminalize protesting and sex work. Or at least, maybe not totally decriminalized, but effectively.
Set of nature codes. There are more.
Make it less punishable in the carceral system, if that makes sense, which is why they tapped in, Elizabeth.
What questions?
See if we have any hands up. Council Pro Tem Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Andrew. I'm interested in some of the language accessibility at 911. First question, whether or not you do any efficiency or kind of annual assessments of how non-English speaker calls are handled, both probably in terms of timing, but also just raw numbers. Timing meaning how long it takes to get an interpreter on the line, how long it takes to resolve that particular phone call year over year, maybe.
Gotcha. And I'll defer to Brian Blick or Jennifer Schwartz, if they can be promoted as well.
They are here and just need to unmute to answer questions.
Good morning. We do have a safety-only contract with a translator service called Cyrocom. We chose that company specifically for 911 because of the services they were able to offer. I don't know off the top of my head, but we can get it for you, the specifics of that contract, what their service requirements are. We don't specifically audit calls like that. They're sort of grouped in with the rest of them, but we are able to access overall counts and how long those calls take on average from Cyrocom as part of the contract.
Thank you so much, Brian. And just maybe a kind of a top 10 of languages. I don't even know if you reach kind of 10 different languages over a year, but that would be really helpful information. Was, we did a quick tour of the 911 call center recently, and was I understanding correctly that you break it up by, is it broken up by council district, or how do you break up your operators? that you break it up by, is it broken up by council district, or how do you break up your operators?
The call takers are not broken up by geography. They just receive any call as they come in in kind of a round robin fashion. The police dispatchers are broken up by PD districts, and the CAD does automatically route calls for service to the appropriate district.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. And just one more on language, I am noticing that some of the STAR calls that are on your map did kind of creep into Council District 3. And I think if, that leads me to kind of another language question about whether or not any non-English speaker calls were referred to STAR, just so I could follow up with them on how those are handled.
I appreciate that.
And actually, Chris Richardson from the STAR team has been messaging me, they have five clinicians on hand.
Chris Hines, if you're still watching, how about Dove? At Deft Dove on Twitter, it's the domestic violence resource for the hearing impaired in Denver.
And then two that speak French.
That's cool.
On the STAR team specifically.
Just curious what sort of accommodations we're making for those individuals.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President Gilmore, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Andrew, thank you for the presentation. Something that you said during your presentation, you know, the amount of, I guess, the capabilities of your CAD system, are there gaps or areas of improvement around software that would enable us to get better real-time data, especially in regards to STAR? Or are you all set up with the proper software to really analyze and look at this? But, you know, knowing this is a pilot, and ultimately, we would love to see this in every police district across the city, what are some of those, I guess?
We would like to see that taking up space in police districts across the city, to be really fucking clear, Gilmore, thank you. We being me and the horse I rode in on.
Who have been doing a lot of the data analysis around STAR could answer far better than I could. As far as I know, we have been able to provide them the information that they need to kind of assess what's working and what isn't. Although, I am looking forward to those conversations, as we talk about expanding the program, there may be some data that the community is interested in us gathering.
By the way, if you guys do not follow the LO West on Twitter, you need to. She posts really amazing threads about sex work and OPSEC, and by the way, all the best practices currently that are used in OPSEC basically everywhere, come from the OPSEC of sex workers.
That there are the capabilities, at least from a software-
Sex work matters, it's real work.
-cad standpoint from 911 operations that we could expand those.
And if you have an OnlyFans account, please go subscribe to the LO West. So, I'm gonna put it up here.
Training that might need to occur, additional staff that might be hired. It would just be helpful to get some of those gaps so that we can work together along with you and council to address this need that I think everybody is very excited to have that expansion. So, like staffing, anything else that you might need?
Sure, well, I can tell you, as far as the software goes, we're actually in the early stages of a pretty significant upgrade to our CAD software. And it's one that we're very excited about. I have not dug into, Jennifer has two very thick binders that detail all the changes that are coming with the new CAD software. But it is going to be, it's going to be nice getting that upgraded. And my understanding is that there will be some additional capability as far as how we can document and track certain statistics. Beyond that, what's nice about any CAD program is they can be adapted to meet the needs. So, for example, I mentioned that at the end of August, I actually might not have mentioned it, at the end of August, we made a change where we were flagging all STAR applicable calls, regardless of whether or not the van was actually available to respond. And this was an attempt to kind of get a better understanding of what the volume was. We were able to do that by simply creating, it's called a quick key, that the dispatchers or call takers can very quickly enter into the notes, and then the data analysts can just troll through the data for that information and get a pretty comprehensive picture. So, you know, any CAD system is going to have its quirks, but what's nice is we've been able to kind of work through those quirks and create the tools that we need. In answer to your final question, I am looking forward to those conversations around the expansion, and we are working to identify what gaps there may be so that we can best support this program. I share your excitement in growing it. And as we go, the nice thing that we've had is a lot of support from Laura Wachter and from Murphy Robinson in what we need to kind of make this a success. So, those will absolutely be a part of the conversation going forward.
How about Deft Dove, will Deft Dove be part of the conversation going forward? Here's another one, y'all, you really need to follow if you don't.
Is, you know, are there different software packages or tools that might also help to maybe transcribe or, from a technology standpoint, identify trends or needs based on maybe types of words used, voice tempo, inflection, kind of those overlays that might take out the manual side of it and have-
Are we monitoring the number of possible oversights we may be making with ableism? Do we have an idea, the number of Denver citizens who have either hearing or visual impairments? Are we tracking that, not to punish them, but rather to serve them? A good place to start is with Deft Dove. Deft Dove, or it's just called Dove, it's a domestic violence organization that specifically serves the deaf community and the hearing impaired community. Their input, if overlooked, then you are not doing your job, City Council.
Definitely starting to emerge. I think when it comes to-
If they can't use emergency services effectively, spoiler alert, they can't. Then you're failing, please stop failing.
Wait and see, take a wait and see approach. I think there is definitely value in utilizing technology to the best of our ability. So, I think we're a little ways off from implementing something along those lines. But I can tell you, I'm kind of a technology geek, and I'm trying to keep on top of that stuff as it goes so that we can continue to adapt and evolve and ultimately meet the needs of the community.
But do they meet the needs of the community?
The folks who utilize us when they're in an emergency have a-
The folks who are able to utilize you, that's what ableism is.
Usually, that expectation is further along than what the technology will allow us to do, but it's our job to try and keep up with those expectations.
Right on, well, I appreciate that, Andrew, and it is exciting where we might be able to utilize technology or with the startup companies, with these companies that are interested. I assume that they need to run plenty of pilots and have that partnership to make sure that whatever they're rolling out is responsive to large municipalities. And so, it'd be interesting how we can expedite that partnership for the betterment of our communities. So, thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President, Councilwoman Kneec, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will follow up on the colleagues', my colleagues' questions. Give me, well, first, Andrew, thank you for what you guys do, it's a really important service to our community, and your call takers are, you know, hidden in a place, we don't see them very often, but please let them know how appreciated they are. So, two things, one is, I didn't, I thought you threw something up on the screen that had a number that said the STAR call takes something percentage less time. I don't see it in the presentation that I have uploaded, so it might have been a last-minute change. Can you just put that slide up or refresh for me what it said?
Let me bet. Yeah, the statistic is, let me see if I can share my screen again, is that the lower-profile response, so-
There it is, all right, it is on the slide deck, I just missed it on the map.
Yeah, so basically, when the STAR van responds, on average, it takes 37% less time for the STAR van to resolve the issue and clear than other agencies.
Okay, got it, so it's a comparison between the STAR van and the safety agency, but in truth, it takes zero time from the safety agency because they are not responding at all, yes? So, there's two minutes, one benefit is the safety agency isn't responding, the second benefit is even STAR takes less time than they would have.
I believe that is what the data is showing, yes.
Okay, I just, I think they're both important points, they're different. But one is a total savings, right, of safety staff time? And the other is just that there's even an efficiency comparison. And I would guess maybe a salary differential too, between what an EMTA and a mental health provider costs compared to what a, you know, veteran police officer and a firefighter, you know, a team of four firefighters on a truck, for example, might cost, for example. So, just thinking about ways that we could take that figure and break it down even further if we were interested in getting at the cost savings involved of a STAR response in comparison to a safety response. Do you, I don't know that that would be your responsibility, but since I bring it up, do you know if anyone is doing that, or is anyone on the call familiar with anyone who's doing that particular analysis?
It's not a bad question, but we need to be analyzing how many in the community we are failing to serve. And where expansion needs to be.
Yeah, I'd be curious, and then, it's okay, you can stop sharing your screen now. And then, I wanted to just clarify, Councilwoman Gilmore asked a lot of great questions about data. I want to ask a question that is about expertise, and forgive me if I missed it, but when I was going back and forth on my budget asks, I learned that you all have a contract we might not see because it's probably below our threshold, but with Rocky Mountain Crisis Services. And did you, did you talk about that earlier, did I miss it?
You know what, I did not. It's a hotline to which we can refer callers or transfer a call.
But you have a very particular, they already exist as a hotline. It's my understanding you all are entering into a contract with them to perform a more particular analysis of calls to help you with the triage.
Beyond calls, are you analyzing the community too?
Sound right?
It doesn't sound familiar to me, but you'll have to forgive me, I've been, next week will be two months on the job, so I'm still learning all the intricacies.
Got it, is there any one of the participants who maybe knows about this particular contract? Who wants to be promoted, who could talk about it? If not, you can always email us later. But my understanding was that you had a new contract specifically with this crisis provider to provide you assessment in real-time of callers when certain criteria were met, which is a little different, like, you know, you make referrals to community all the time. This is about them providing you a service that's a little different than what they do every day. So, anyway, it looks like someone you joined us, Jennifer?
Yeah. Hi, yeah, we are still working on shoring up, we were very close pre-COVID to making that partnership go live here at the center. Initially, our thoughts were that we would have those clinicians who would staff a hotline physically present in the center with us.
Y'all, I'm not beat up on STAR, I love the STAR program. I hate the processes that are being used to determine how much money it should be given and how wide its reach should be. They are failing on the very basic level of analysis, basic.
Have that same agreement with them, so we are working out decision trees and-
This is also, by the way, why the census was so fucking important.
And what that will look like, so that is still ongoing for us, but it will be a reference, an option for our ECTs.
Great, well, I just want to make sure my colleagues knew about it, and I guess you may not know the answer to this next question yet, but is it your sense that you're headed for this kind of advice and support for a range of calls that may be unrelated necessarily, they might be overlap with STAR? Their assessment might help you decide whether to send a police officer because a suicide is imminent versus a STAR responder because, you know, it's a more attenuated, you know, threat of suicide.
Carrie Joy, you're watching?
Correct me if I'm wrong, is it-
Happy birthday, Carrie Joy.
-in some way, shape, or form?
So, I think it's right along in the same continuum with STAR, if you will. So, back to what Andrew had said to us earlier, removing the element of imminent life threat, presence of a weapon, being used in a threatening manner, those sorts of things are really traditional to a safety response. And yes, we wouldn't ever put a clinician, well, we would attempt to remove the element of danger for a clinician to walk into something that could be harmful for them. So, yes, you are right, it's sort of, again, back to what Andrew was saying, they overlap, they are interwoven, and it becomes an additional option for us. But yes, if we choose to lean on the RMCP clinician to provide us direction, if they felt differently about a response, then we would engage and initiate a STAR response or a safety response according to-
Carrie Joy, if you're watching, the detail that I'm talking about is, and that I've been screaming about for the past 15 minutes, is that right now, they're talking about the processes without actually answering the question of how they are meeting the community needs, right?
So, this is about the potential for more initial advice.
We have no idea if they're tracking the number of citizens that are unable to access STAR services and thereby where expansion would need to be. For example-
Not necessarily adding a third or new response alternative.
No, it's okay, it's okay, be distracted. For example, Deft Dove is a domestic violence organization that specializes in assisting the deaf community and hearing impaired individuals who are currently unable to access most emergency services. So, to that end, what percentage of the community, now that we know that the deaf community is being left out, are they also, in these data collection processes they're so excited about, are they looking and measuring what proportion of the community is failing to be served? I bet a whole lot of them are District 9.
... threshold of a council contract, so you guys-
I've been screaming for Chris Hines to do the same thing, I'm like, call out the ableism, call out the ableism! So, to be fair to Chris Hines, I'm gonna say this to you too, Candy, sorry. And happy birthday, Carrie Joy.
Here's the request, it's, you know, it's great that we've, you know, brought you out from the shadows a little bit, and you're talking with us, if you could please keep the conversation going by letting us know what this looks like when it is finalized, even if it doesn't come through us for approval, that would be very appreciated, so that we can kind of keep understanding the full toolset that you have for managing calls to the lowest appropriate level of escalation, if you will. But thank you very much for your answers.
In a similar vein, I think it's worth mentioning too that we've developed a partnership with Denver Health for low-acuity medical calls, where we now have a nurse line. So, we can, you know, quickly assess the call, and if it's something like, well, I've got a tummy ache, we can, rather than sending an ambulance, because a lot of times, these people don't need an ambulance, and an ambulance ride is often expensive, we can connect them with a registered nurse who can kind of talk them through. And then, if the nurse says, you know what, we probably need to go get him, we can still do that. But again, along those same veins of finding alternatives to sending responders necessarily and getting more tailored help to the folks who call.
Are you good there, Councilwoman? Very fine, Councilman Flynn, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Andrew, I'm looking at slide seven, that's seven, yeah. So, from September 1st to October 21st, 51 days, there was an average of about five responses per day by the STAR van, I think it worked out, there was 250 incidents over 51 days. But of 86,000, I'm going to make sure I'm reading this data correctly, of the 86,594 incidents that were called in by folks to 911, 1,340 were flagged as STAR eligible. That's a citywide figure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can that number, that 1340 number be broken down? And I ask this knowing that it probably can, can it be broken down by what the nature code was, and can we see that? And can it be broken down by geography, and can we see that to get what Councilwoman Torres was talking? Because I think all of us would like to see what are the calls that are STAR eligible that are originating from our respective districts.
Sure. I will, yes, I believe that can be done. I will get with Zach and Blake and see what we can put together. They may have that data at their fingertips. It may also take a little bit of digging, but I'm confident we can get that for you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I want to compliment the 911 crew for working with our staff with the calls for service requests that I had put in that I shared with council earlier about the number of potential STAR eligible calls. And I noted that it's about a 37% less cost for response. Is that what I saw, or less personnel time?
Yeah, it's personnel time.
Personnel time. Okay, so it's a lower cost response, but it's not necessarily a cost savings because I've seen screenshots of some officers' CAD displays in their units that sometimes here in Police District Four, we have 10 calls that are stacked up waiting for response. So anytime we can avert a call to a lower level response, or a STAR van or some other response, what that does is it doesn't mean that the officer has nothing to do. It means that they can get to the ninth call that's waiting, or the 38th or the 7th. 1.5% of those calls from September 1st through October 21st, STAR eligible. I would think that that'd be a little higher. So I'm interested-
Candy, that's what I'm talking about. This is why the number would be higher.
What the Expansion Working Group is looking at, and what their timetable is for making recommendations.
Sure.
The Expansion Working Group doesn't have the data they need.
We're looking at everything.
No, you're not. But you're not looking at everything. No, you're not. You're not looking at the community.
The pilot was deliberately narrow in focus. And the expansion, you know, really, the discussion is around how best can we serve the community. To Councilwoman Knech's point, how best can the community contribute to that service? So we're still in the very early stages. Given that we're still waiting for final budget and all of that, we're in the very early stages of figuring out the next steps for how we're going to design that expansion. But I can tell you that we've got a lot of very passionate people involved in this.
Yeah, you got passionate people watching too, motherfucker. And absolutely none of your lions have come near my people who are impacted by this.
Kind of noted by one of the community members is that this is kind of unique. Yes, there are other cities like Eugene, Oregon, of whom we kind of base this program. But Denver is completely different. To just copy and paste over here wouldn't have worked. And so we're kind of blazing the trail here in a lot of ways. And I can tell you that based on our successes, we've already had other cities reaching out to us looking for information. Jennifer gets calls and emails on a regular basis from anywhere from Aurora out to, you know, the East Coast, who are interested in what we're doing and want to kind of pick our brains on how they can do the same thing.
Do you, does the Expansion Working Group have a timetable, or are you-
Is the Expansion Working Group looking at the community and the population they are currently unable to serve? How are they estimating the need? I promise you, this doesn't seem like an important question.
All right. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
If, unless you're deaf and maybe a sex worker and have no one to call when you're in danger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a request and a question about the data. The request is that we get some calendar invites to council members when those working group, or when the Expansion Working Group occurs, if it's open to the public, a link to be able to tune in. And the question was about what Councilman Flynn raised. He mentioned that we were, or that 911 had worked with our central office staff to analyze which calls were STAR eligible. And when they did that analysis, what our central staff found was that there were more STAR eligible calls than were being originally flagged.
Yes.
And so I'm curious about that discrepancy or that difference, and how we're going back to recode those, or how we're doing a better job going forward.
First, we need to know what's missed, and then we need to know what was unable to make the call. Those are two numbers that are really important in determining need.
The full picture of what is eligible in order to budget more appropriately.
Yes. Love you, Candy.
Sure. No, that's an excellent question. And I can tell you that review and refinement is kind of baked into what, everything that we do here, and STAR is no exception.
But are you reaching out to the people who are overlooked to help refine your processes?
Our process has been for-
If they aren't here now, what makes me think they're going to be included later?
And seeing how and where maybe a STAR flag was missed and that sort of thing.
But have you reached out to the community to ask for specific examples where a STAR flag was missed and shouldn't have been?
Where we audit more specifically the nature codes that are tied to the STAR pilot or the STAR program. It's definitely something we can explore. But there was also, there's a little bit of human error involved or a learning curve when it comes to a newer project. When it started in the pilot phase, it was sort of a slow rollout. It has gotten bigger, of course, as time has gone on. In, I want to say mid-August, initially, the STAR program-
This is why you need-
Was limited just to a specific geographic area.
This is what ableism looks like, y'all. This is why you need a person who is hearing impaired in the room every single time you have a meeting. This is why you need a person of color at the table every single time you have a meeting. They can tell you when these processes have excluded them. And that is a failure that we are in the middle of a movement of recognizing and correcting.
We work in coordination with, Andrew mentioned Zach McDavid and Blake Christensen before from EDOS. We work in collaboration-
I love you, but no, I will not keep it down.
Identifying-
Go downstairs. This house is empty. I'm already in the bedroom.
Is there the potential to complicate or sophisticate the CAD codes that we're using so that we have very specific details about what a call is for? I know that in the moment, it's difficult when you're dispatching to get super specific. But when we look at the CAD codes, it's really hard for us to make sense of them because they're so vague. How can we do it? And what would it take to get some community involvement to do that?
And I just want to make sure, you're talking about the overall, what we call nature code, so like welfare, that, the broad ones. Yeah, I understand. Those are fairly broad. The specifics of the call are located in the comment section, is what we refer to, of the individual CAD incident. So if you ever needed more detail, a lot of what we pull reporting wise comes from a query of those comments section. Andrew mentioned a quick key for the STAR program, and that's how we actually pull out all the individual STAR calls, is we create a query to identify that specific comment. And we could always expand that query to include other things and pick more information out of the call. There's a wealth of information in the CAD. Sometimes the trick is just figuring out which table it's in, or what exactly you want to pull. But there's a lot there that we could, a lot more detail that we could pull out if needed.
Got it. And is there anybody from the disability community represented on the Expansion Work Group? I know there's some research out there about a lot of nonviolent calls for emergency service coming from people with disabilities. And so I just want to really make sure that they're represented-
Yay!
-as we expand STAR.
Who loves candy? I do.
And I will absolutely forward that to the folks who are kind of, Jennifer and I have been there as participants.
Uh huh. So you don't know, which means no.
My understanding is that the city procured someone to be the facilitator, and I'm blanking on his name at the moment. But he's been, yes, thank you. He's been working with each of these community groups to, well, and I can tell you that on those calls, there have been-
Because I haven't seen any of these communities talking about how the STAR program works for them. I've seen complaints and concerns.
There is a rep from the disability community who recently joined.
Disability, what the fuck is that?
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. That's it for my questions, Mr. Chair.
What the fuck is the disability community? That's like the black community. Are they a monolith?
I'm not seeing any other hands up. Give it just a second.
We need to be, this is a public service. We need to be estimating what percentage of people are unable to be served, which are being, because they can't access the service or make the call, which are unable to access the service or use the service because the service itself is set up poorly, or because of the demand, how much it outstrips our supply. Those are three numbers that we don't have, then we don't need to expand it. We're failing where we're at.
Twenty-three minutes of your morning, and we will see you all next time around. Have a great day, folks.
Thanks, Cashman. Fuck everyone who didn't vote no on the allied contract. Fuck all of you, except Candy. I love you. All right, so that was a big meeting today. It's still Carrie Joy's birthday. Please sing to her. Yay, happy birthday, Carrie Joy. But again, all of this stuff is important. All of it matters. This is why we have to show up, and we cannot tune out until the final questions are asked. We are in the middle of a movement for Black Lives that really centers around representation, and who's at the table and who's being included. So this is why we say if we are not serving Black, disabled, sex workers, then we aren't serving anybody. If we're not, if they are not included or centered somehow, and that disability aspect is so critical, because when you think about things that can be treated, say with health insurance, that's why this matters, the number of maladies that are easily cured or remedied that are prevalent or become really problematic in a community that has been, become a permanent underclass due to the prison pipeline, the school-to-prison pipeline that we talked about. All of these things intersect. And when you, when you say, hey, Black, disabled sex worker who is definitely not able to call the police and might not be able to access 911 in the moment that they need it without assistance, how's this working out for you? What changes are you seeing? If we're not asking that question, we are not doing our jobs. We have no business expanding unless we're actually okay saying, well, we don't really care if we can service Black, disabled women because there aren't that many. There are exactly two in Denver. If we can't say that with a straight face because we've done the math, then we need to stop expanding and we need to shut our doors. Which is basically what I said to the Blue Bench in the last board meeting we had. So why am I going to treat the nonprofit that exists to fill a gap that was created in public services? If I'm not going to say the same thing to the government, that creates the gap in the first place. This is why we got to show up, we got to shout, we got to push, and we got to say thank you when they listen. Thank you, Chris Hines, for showing up and listening. Thank you, Candice DeBaca, for showing up and listening. Thank you, everybody, for being here and listening. We got the allied security contract killed because you showed up. I know it's hard to do. I know you've got stuff to do. I know you've got places to be. I got privileged enough to be able to sit here and do this, and this is how I'm going to use it going forward. I mean, standing out in the snow and yelling. I'd rather do that with my children in the middle of the afternoon than downtown at night. Sorry, y'all. I would also rather yell like this during the day. It's kind of cathartic. Yay, you're welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you for watching, Katie. I appreciate you. I appreciate everybody else. You are coached. You are loved. Happy birthday, Carrie Joy. Enjoy the rest of your day.